All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 6th, 2022 Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Can I have a motion to call the meeting to order? Mike, motion? Second? Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven, nothing. All right, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then I just need a motion to amend the agenda. Instead of Capitol Project Resolution, it will be Capitol Project Update.
So moved.
So moved. Linda, second? Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven, nothing. All right. And with that, we welcome our student liaisons, Audrey, Sydney, Lauren, and Hannah.
Good evening, everyone. On Tuesday, November 22nd, the Dream Club attended the Rock to Change Summit at St. John Fisher University. Approximately 400 students from the greater Rochester area participated where they discussed the topic of race in relation to both the community and the world. Webster students collaborated with Edison Tech students in order to plan the entire day. Students led group sessions that fostered the idea of empowerment in order to bring change within society. It was a great day full of inspiration. The day before Thanksgiving break, the freshmen reconvened with their link leaders during their seventh block class. A short scavenger hunt was planned, which was then followed by a little check-in to see how their ninth grade year was going. Thank you to the link crew advisors for organizing the fun activities and to the link leaders for facilitating them. On Saturday, December 3rd, Holly F., Jessica F., Felipe F., Jacqueline H., and Garrett M. competed in the University of Buffalo High School cybersecurity competition where they placed first overall. The team was tasked with defending a small network of systems from attack and scored based on how accessible their services remained. Teams were also assigned and scored on various timed tasks throughout the event. A job well done to the students who participated in the competition.
Fall sports have officially come to an end for the 2022 season. Our football team had a great season this year as divisional champs and sectional finalists. They had a huge winning streak starting at the beginning of the season and ending at sectionals. The boys volleyball team won sectionals and were state finalists. We are proud to have a program with the second-best team in New York State. Congratulations to all of our fall sports teams and good luck to our senior athletes. Winter sports have begun their seasons, and our girls basketball team has already won their first game against Fairport. Our boys basketball team has been working hard at Aquinas in the first tournament of the year. The bowling teams, both unified and regular, have already had a few successful games. We look forward to seeing the winter sports season play out for the 22-23 season. Schrader participated in its annual Sources of Strength meeting yesterday. National club members come in and teach peer-elected leaders at Schrader how to manage their own struggles and emotions, along with helping others that struggle with mental health. Our peer leaders come from all different backgrounds and participate in a multitude of activities. They came together to play games, have heart-to-heart conversations, and went over the eight pieces to mental fitness. The club's main goal is suicide prevention and mental health improvement throughout high schools. We appreciate them coming to Schrader every year to teach us how to control our own minds and protect each other. This week, International Club, the Young Women's Empowerment Group, and Student Council have teamed up to collect donations for Willow Domestic Violence Center and Saints Place to help those in need. The clubs are collecting basic toiletries and clothes like toothbrushes, socks, and blankets. We appreciate their collection and are excited to add to it for the season of giving. A few seniors headed our annual Mount Hope Family Center donation drive at Schrader this year, which was a huge success. The Warriors raised $2,200, which fed 20 Rochester-area families Thanksgiving dinner and paid for holiday gifts for their children. Thank you to Marlena S., Michaela B., Samantha S., and Julia S., who led the initiative to give back to the community. That is all for us this month, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. With the second quarter beginning, Titans have been starting off the winter very well. In the library, the Thomas Skylight Cafe had its grand opening. The new and exciting cafe is a collaboration between one of the special education programs, our food service departments, and the media center. As it has been such a big hit, the cafe is open from 8:30 to 10:30 with all items priced at only a dollar. The Student Council is excited to announce our upcoming Holiday Spirit Week, starting Monday, the 19th of December, where it is Fall-a-la-la-landal Monday Day, so wear your favorite winter flannels, and at lunch we'll be making snowflakes. On Tuesday, it is Ugly Sweater Day, so make sure you wear your favorite, and at lunch, holiday movies will be playing. Wednesday, we say let it snow. Everyone will wear white. Thursday, it is Holiday Class Color Day. Seniors and juniors will wear red, sophomores and freshmen will wear green, and the staff will be in blue. Last but not least is Friday, and it is a cozy day, so dress in your favorite lounging clothes. Upon students' arrival in the morning, Student Council will hand out candy canes and hot chocolate compliments of the Thomas PTSA. It was so nice to see all of you at the, at your visit to Thomas, especially during the Titan Service Scholars Meeting. We are excited to share with you some of our past and upcoming events. The RIT Latin Dance Club visited us to teach us history and some dance moves that our scholars can use with the community members of the Dominican Republic when we go this July. The class was open to anyone, so many people brought their friends, and we all had such a great time. Early November, we joined Eden Gardens for their Empty Bowl Soup Supper, where we previously in the year built sustainable gardens and planted healthy food for the community members who did not have access to any. At Empty Bowls, we used the produce that we planted in the gardens. And it was such a cool event to see all of our hard work pay off that we put in for the members of Beechwood to enjoy lots of different soups. For Veterans Day, Titan Service Scholars joined one soldier at a time and handed out cards to show our appreciation and thanks to all the veterans who have served for us. The cards were made by first and second graders at Clem South through our Book Buddies Program, where we read them a book and made cards with them, along with teaching them about veterans and why are they so important. The Titan Service Scholars are busy with many upcoming events. Next Tuesday, we'll be working with the Salvation Army to help families in need of food and toys for the holiday times. Please join us this Saturday, December 10th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for Titan Service Scholars' very own Jingle and Mingle. This will be hosted at Kittle Burgers. This event will be in support of scholars who are going on the international service trip to the Dominican Republic. Each scholar will be taking over a position in the store with food and drink tastings, live holiday music from our orchestra quartet, and of course, shopping. We'd absolutely love to see everyone there to help our scholars.
Hannah, is that this Saturday?
Yes, this Saturday.
Moving on to music, congratulations to all the Titan musicians who were selected for the 2022 New York State School Music Association Junior High Area All-State Festival. These students attended the NYSSMA Solo Festival last spring and were selected for their outstanding musicianship in preparation for their solo. This past weekend, Shanna Smith, Maya Vanderbrook, and Lauren White took the stage with NYSSMA mixed colors with a group of over 215 students from all across New York State. Congratulations, ladies, on this achievement and huge milestone in your musical journey. Moving on, our drama club did an amazing job in the production of Clue. It was an excellent display of talent from our very own Titans, and the audience enjoyed the absolutely hilarious play. We thank the hard-working Titans that provided this entertainment. Speaking of the arts, Webster Thomas is starting their very own chapter of the National Art Honor Society. Those who love to be creative and express themselves are welcome to join. Congratulations to the West, wait, sorry. Moving on to sports, congratulations to our Webster Lakers Boys Volleyball Team. They won the Section V title and the regional map. They were sent to states where they sadly did not take home the state trophy, but we are extremely proud of them. Congratulations to our Titan Unified Bowling Team for winning the championships. With Jeffrey G., who bowled a 186 to secure the win. Evan L. and Jerry L. were sent to the cross-country state championships. Evan finished ninth, making Thomas history and becoming the first Titan to be placed in the top 10, and Jerry L. finished 26. A few of our swimmers were sent to states as well. Melissa R., Nikisha D., Vivian N., and Maren B. competed very well at the championship. We are very proud of our fall athletes. Winter sports are kicking off in full gear. The boys basketball team won their first home game against Gaige Tyle last Friday. Girls' basketball has a home game against Schrader tonight. A recent event our Titans participated in was the Rock to Change Event. Rock to Change is a summit about race diversity and how to invoke change throughout Rochester. The main theme for this year's summit was called Jump: Standing for Be Just, Be Unified, Be Mindful, and to Be Peaceful. Thomas Titans did a presentation called "A Walk in Our Shoes." They talked about implicit biases, white privilege, silencing, normalizing cultural appropriation, and the speak-up process, how to speak out against racial discrimination, and profiling against people of color. Rock to Change was clearly a success, and students cannot wait to proudly continue on working in on equity. Thank you for all, thank you all for listening, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, girls.
Oh, that's right, Thomas Schrader Girls. And next we have Joan.
Didn't have my name tagged once.
Well, they do.
Yes, we made sure.
You can appreciate Dave Swenson for that, can't you, Rob? All right, you guys, so awesome when they report.
It is.
Amazing. They're inspiring, all of them. All right, good evening to all of you. And as always, we start with our safety. What started as a temporary voice to navigate through the COVID days, we thought, that turned into months, years, and keep going, evolved into one of the most important positions we have with our WTA. It's our Chair of Safety Committee, and he established a strong link between our district and many office members who have to work together and discuss things, whether discussing the doors, the locks, the windows, procedures, and other things that come along with construction. TJ has established a trusting relationship with many of you sitting before us, and we appreciate that. Moving to an end in mind, an end in sight, actually, are WTA retirees. Many of them are still here, even though they have retired. Some even sit on the board. Their commitment is unwavering, unshakable, unrelenting. Their work is crucial, whether they're sweeping in and providing students with reteaching and practice, to help them earn passing scores, or helping those who have been absent to catch up. The fact remains, students need that help, and with work by current WTA members providing valuable instruction, other students are learning from people who have been in our buildings and know our students and continue to connect. What they do for our students, our families, our community is invaluable, and we appreciate all of them. Continuing our talk on unrelenting is Jen Strugge. A colleague wrote us that her esteemed librarian, who has ensured the overall incompetence that goes far beyond her years. She has endured a temporary library last year and maintained true professionalism as she works with UPK students, her high school students, and working in unrelenting, painstakingly. I love that when he wrote that, when you have to take away books that have been tucked away. You don't want to tuck away books, but you know you have to, to give opportunity in the books to shelve and come out, and she does it with such style and grace, and continues every day with a deadline that we all know keeps getting pushed, but we know is part of life. Our Webster-Schrader High School Dream Club and both our students, it was so cool to hear them speak about it, co-hosted the Rock to Change. It was a countywide summit on race, November 22nd, at St. John Fisher. Thirty-nine schools in our area were in attendance, and as our student liaisons mentioned, the theme was jump: be just, be unified, be mindful, and be peaceful. We truly appreciate all the work that goes behind the scenes from all our members to help make that possible. Our Schrader Newspaper Club, along with the Journalism Class, launched a digital newspaper. It was so cool that Schrader picked it up and is looking, Schrader Thomas picked it up, and is collaborating to see how, what connections we can make, what interviews we could do, and what things, what inspiring investigating can be done across Empire Boulevard, or Ridge Road there. Our PTSA, that partnership is stronger than ever. This weekend, many of our WTA members were volunteering, as well as inspiring our students to volunteer at the Winter Wonderland and holidays around the world. Coming up, our, the WTA and PTSA, can't believe I'm saying this, PTSA Oak Tree nominations have already been opened, and Community Arts Day is in the planning. Our WTA cares. I'm thinking polar plunge, team. I'm thinking of your opening day slides. You can have your family rafting and your polar plunge.
Yes, I tried. I've already done that. You're right.
Yeah, I think you have a co-captain at the end.
Forty-eight degree water.
Yeah, Craig Johnville's going to be reaching out to all of us. It'll be, it'll be a lot of fun. Our WTA scholarship, this I found out yesterday, was our president's, our union president's. One of the most favorite things he has, it's scholarships that are awarded to children of WTA members or students who are looking into going for teaching. Five scholarships a year have been awarded to students from both, from all our schools, well, not all our schools, our two high schools, who are going to college and need that additional check. That check for $1,000 is mighty handful, mighty useful. Our EDI, Candace Lucas, she continues to share the progress made. Last month, our Native American Heritage Month was alive and well at our elementary, our middle, and our high school. Our music programs and art programs found ways to constantly integrate topics in, in which students learned and broadened their knowledge about both culture, religion, and acceptance. Recently, we took, our staff took a beautiful email, reaching out that we have our newest members and our people who are within five years need their masters. That's nothing new. And it was really neat to see and continue to see that the colleges in the area and human resources and WTA are all looking at what things are available together. As we end, our One Webster, it was also really neat to get a Thanksgiving email, well, an email right before Thanksgiving. We all know it takes everybody, and all bargaining presidents came together and sent an email to say, hey, it's joy, it's cheer, it's really neat to have holidays, but we know it's really hard sometimes, and it's not always balanced, and it's not always fair. So when you need help, there is help available, so please don't feel alone. And that came from all bargaining units, showing the true Webster spirit. To all of you, we wish you a healthy and beautiful season, and when those things are impossible, we wish you healing and peace.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you very much, Joanie.
Onto our superintendent's report.
All right. Heather and Jim, if you guys want to come on up and you can get set, and I'm actually going to start. I got three, and then I'll turn it over to you guys. Yeah, Michelle, you can come on up too, all three of you. That'd be great. Thanks. All right, I'm going to begin my report with a unique opportunity for our adults in our community and beyond, and that's our district is excited to offer a free English as a Second Language class. We are pleased to partner with the Rochester City School District Office of Adult and Career Education Services to offer this class to any adult interested in learning English as a second language. The class will be taught by a Ukrainian speaker, and we hope it will help support the growing number of Ukrainian families in Webster. People from all language backgrounds are invited to participate, and you need not live in Webster to do so. It's an ongoing class taking place Monday through Friday from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Webster-Schrader High School. You need only come to class to enroll, so for more information, you can visit our website and our news story. Next up, I want to extend an invitation to all district families to attend our Family Engagement Panel Discussion on Restorative Practices next week on Wednesday, December 14th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in this, right here in this space in the second floor PDC at Spry Middle School. Panelists will include Dr. Robert Shawwell, Webster's CSD's Director of Family Engagement and Inclusivity, a Webster CSD parent and a student, and Katie DeSalvo, who is a licensed mental health counselor that's working with us this year from Balfour Rise. This panel discussion is the, is the promised follow-up to the district's Parent Guardian Listening Forum that we held in early November, and you can submit questions to the panel in advance by visiting the district's website, websterschools.org's news section. Next, a reminder for our families with children who are infants up to five years old, I love that picture. You are asked to complete a brief young child census. This census allows the district to forecast student enrollment for the future. Families have until January 6th to complete the census, which can be found on our website. And if you don't have access to a computer, don't worry. Please make sure, just give us a call at our Student Registration Department, which is 216-0029. All right, and now I am going to turn things over to my esteemed colleagues. I think Mrs. Heather Balsamo is going to go first, followed by Mr. Jim Bear, and then Mrs. Michelle Brinkin, who are going to give us some campus news updates. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, and thank you to all of our board members for your time and volunteering, for your visits. We love to see you in our schools. So we know that you just visited DeWitt as well, and so Mr. Schick will actually put this together, and I just have the liberty of sharing it, so you'll see a lot of DeWitt familiarity from your visit. All right, so our theme continues with our high school students, who were talking about some gratitude and kindness. And so at DeWitt, we were celebrating World Kindness Day. They created thank-you notes to essential workers, first responders, and veterans, including decorated bookmarks for the Webster Public Library. They created inspirational pictures for the seniors at Maplewood Senior Community. Our kindergartners created, painted, or they painted, sorry, kindness rocks and worked with their panda pals to learn some jokes to be able to make others smile. And our first and fourth grade classes, first grade learned some songs that they were able to share about care throughout the school. Fourth grade classes created posters about kindness that they were able to share throughout the school as well, and there's an example there. Our classroom teachers read a variety of books about kindness, again, a similar way that we handle it throughout elementary is the read-aloud, sharing it throughout each one of our classrooms, purchasing one book and then able to share that. So it's a common theme and also a common message that all students are receiving. So the students wrote acts of kindness that they did on paper hearts, and many of you probably saw those hanging in the front foyer. They're wonderful sight to behold. So these were actual acts that the students did for one another or that they received. The care leaders collected food items donated from all grade levels and from the DeWitt Road Panda Community. And this, these were given to DeWitt families in need, and then the additional pieces were donated to Hope Ministries and Webster, which supports all of our Webster community. At Plank South, a similar theme, 878 boxes of cereal were donated to local food pantries. And as you can see from that middle picture, they did an exciting event with those boxes and science and a little STEM activity, and had them all set up as Domino's. So every classroom was able to witness that travel throughout the school and end in that little spiral you see there. We are thankful to our school's social worker, Janet W., who organized that. Lots of excitement, as you can see from those pictures there, so that was lots of fun. At Plank North, continuing with the School 17 Gift Exchange, very near and dear to our hearts. So Plank North, Plank South, and Spry, students and staff are signing up. Our families are contributing and purchasing gifts for every student that attends School 17. Fifth graders will then wrap those presents in December, and then we will take a field trip to actually distribute those to those students. That is a life-altering moment. If you've not participated in that yet, it's an amazing experience. Plank North does, also does Share the Season, food donation to local agencies, this is one half. There's another whole half on the other side of that wall. And then Plank North also did a Share the Spirit, where staff supported students or families and students in need for the holidays, either with food or some contributions to be able to purchase some needed household items that they had. At Clem North, they have a, an evening focused on charitable giving called Holiday Helping Hands. They are going to make holiday crafts and festive door signs to donate to local senior living residents. They have a station that's set up to draw pictures and write letters to a variety of community helpers, including military personnel, healthcare workers, firefighters, and police officers. They're also going to make something new this year, puppy tug toys to donate to a local animal shelter, and that was contributed from students who really wanted to contribute in that way. And then we will help to assemble donated toiletry items for kits for the homeless. And we have two new assistant principals to the elementary level that we wanted to just take a moment to share with you. We had two very different but exciting events for our student bodies to participate in. So the first one, at State Road, we welcomed Cody Miller as their new assistant principal. And you can see he and Principal Kate Hasla, they had to do a communication crew challenge. And they had a curtain that was in between them, and they had to try to recreate a structure without being able to see one another or see the picture. And so they really had to focus on their clear communication skills, which is the focus of their student body for this month as well. They might have had a little help, as you can see those thumbs up in the front there, kind of giving the students, definitely were helping them throughout that, so. But kudos to Mr. Miller. He did a great job with that. And last but not least, we welcome Derek Peterson to DeWitt Road. He is our newest panda, and he created a PowerPoint presentation where he shared some fun facts about himself. We learned about his two beautiful daughters and some sports teams that he follows. So he is a Dallas Cowboys fan, and Cuse, so those are his two. And not to leave Cody out, Mr. Miller, he is a Dallas Cowboys, or did I say? No, Pittsburgh Steelers, sorry, Pittsburgh Steelers, Pittsburgh Steelers, so, yep. So those are our new, yeah. Poor Cody, right? So those are our two new assistant principals at elementary. Okay?
Thank you.
And Mr. Bear.
Go Bills!
That's what I was thinking.
I want to thank the board and the community for allowing me to speak tonight and highlighting some of the great things happening at our secondary buildings across the district. Can't believe we're in December already and into the second quarter. It's amazing how fast the year is flying. And I'm amazed at the growth and the transition our kids have shown this year. I had a great board visit this past week as well. You're welcome in anytime. Love to show off the building, and we had some great students speak that were just phenomenal. And it was, it was a great visit, so I appreciate that.
And they did not hold back.
No, they didn't.
Every question we had, they just were like 100% honest and really enjoyed it, yep.
Had me sweating, so. It's all good.
They were.
Yeah. I'll try to be as brief as possible and try not to repeat too much, but Goal. Goal Giving was a great success. The entire Goal staff contributed to a full Thanksgiving dinner for the Goal program on 11/22. What a great event. Goal families provided more than enough desserts. You see a table full of goodies there. Student family members joined us for dinner. Former students joined us for dinner, which I think is really neat, having some former students back, and students' parents and staff shared gratitude at the dinner table. And students spent an hour and a half eating, sitting, and conversing without their phones, which is awesome, so. What a great event at Goal. Al Middle, Al Middle had their own Thanksgiving event as well. In addition to eating a meal as a program, the students engaged in different activities throughout the day. They included community building and sharing gratitude. So you see a lot of kids there with smiles, performing, doing some activities and doing some different things. They had a great day with that meal. For Thomas High School, again, congratulations to Thomas Schrader For Thomas High School, again, congratulations to the Thomas Schrader Volleyball Lakers for winning sectionals and state finalists. And again, congratulations to the Titans Bowling Team, which took first place in their championship match. We heard about the great club start, and also the Titans Scholars Program, which is, which was busy with the Empty Bowls Event, and went to Clem South to be book buddies with, buddies with some of their future Titans. And the service cows were also at Applebee's, celebrating local veterans and passing out over three hundred handmade thank you cards for their service to their country, which is amazing. And you also heard already about the opening of the Skylight Cafe in the Media Center, which is a collaboration of programs and a great for the kids, because they can come in in the morning and gives them a place to go in the morning at Schrader, or Thomas. Schrader High School, Warriors Giving International Club, the Young Women's Empowerment Group, and Student Council joining forces for the season giving. They're collecting donations through December fifth through ninth for Saints Plate in Willow. Thanks to our generosity and kindness, our Mount Hope Family Center team raised over two thousand two hundred dollars to feed twenty families Thanksgiving dinner. The surplus cash will be spent on holiday gifts for the kids of these families, which is awesome. You heard about the Dream Club and Rock to Change visit to Saint John Fisher. Schrader also celebrated National Kindness Day, and I like the card that is out there having a positive mindset and spreading love, just being positive. And the Green Club and Architect Geo Class added solar panels to one of the buildings outside of Schrader. Neat activity. Willink, Willink had a outstanding, great turnout to their eighth grade fall ball semi-formal. You see a lot of happy faces there and a lot of dressed up young women and young gentlemen. What a great event, and again, they had a great turnout for that. And then their P E classes were watching the USA versus Iran game, and they're celebrating the goal the U S scored, U S should have scored a couple of goals that game, but celebrating the fun and watching the World Cup. I know that's been a popular thing in lunches when it comes on at two o'clock, just at least at the beginning of lunch and for our kids as well. Spry, we had our Veterans Day Dinner, thanking people for their service, service members and their giving to our country. We served, I don't know how many dinners we served that night, but we served quite a few sponsors for the event. I want to thank Spry Builders Club, the Webster Fairport Elks, Spry Middle School Student Council, Wegmans, Walmart, and Heggadorns for their sponsorship of that great event, an annual event that Jackie Saunders puts a lot of time into, one of my assistant principals, and does a great job, and it's a great way to give back to the community. Winter sports and Winter Athletic Study Hall are in full bloom. We are in full swing and intermaral still in full swing, so we have kids being very active right now, along with our clubs. We celebrate a World Kindness Day with help from P T S A. They had goodies for us, but they also had the kids making kindness cards to their teachers during lunch, lunches during that day, and I was amazed at how many kindness cards went out to teachers that day, which was a great lift for the kids and teachers both. Thank you for an awesome coffee cart visit as well, that was a great day, great two and a half, three hours. We spent talking, conversing, and visiting the buildings, so I appreciate that. We're starting a food, Spry Food Pantry led by Megan Piefko. We're looking forward to collecting food by houses each month and giving back to the less fortunate and giving food to some of those families that are in need, and that's going to be something that's new and it's just starting up, so we're proud of that. Eighth grade had a great Washington DC trip, minus a bus breakdown and minus a couple sick kids, we, we had a great time, and the kids just had memories that they'll remember forever. And, you know, not to leave out the kids that couldn't, didn't go or couldn't go either, they visited the zoo, the Vietnam Memorial, jumping out or sky, whatever it's called, the One Jump Place, bowling, movies, the zoo, they had a lot of events as well for them that didn't attend the DC trip, but we're looking forward to a great trip next year as well. And just like was mentioned before, School Seventeen, our sister school in the city, we're doing gift giving for up to grade six with them. It is a great event because it's probably one of the only gifts some, some of those kids will get, and we have a great turnout for that and a great participation for that, and we look forward to doing that every year, and that's in full swing right now and coming up very shortly, so. I want to thank you, and I want to wish everybody a healthy and happy holidays.
Thanks, Jim. And now our, our district's nurse coordinator, Mrs. Michelle Brinka, for a couple of updates as well, thanks for joining us, Michelle.
I didn't know I could bring slides, so.
That's okay, you're good.
Well, the first thing I wanted to point out is when I travel from the help of, between all the health offices this year, what a difference.
Yes, exactly.
It was apparent the first week when I walked to see how everybody was doing, the smiles on everybody's faces, first of all, that you could see them smile, and just the general elation. Not only my health staff, but also the students in the hall, the teachers, but especially the health staff. They were thrilled to return to some sense of normalcy, even though COVID is part of their life, it's not what defined their life anymore as a school nurse or a health aide in the health office. They are just voicing tremendous satisfaction with be able to return to nursing, to develop those relationships, to care for their students, and do everything that they felt they needed to do as a school nurse. It's just wonderful to see the students smile, and they say it's just that they're building those relationships that they felt two years prior they weren't able to do. So one of the things that I'm most proud of is that we've been able to expand our One Webster Health Team to the point where I feel like, wow, we've got this, like, we have a really safe district when it comes to medical care. We added two nurses, we added another nurse to each secondary school, so two R Ns to the high schools, an R N extra to the high school and an L P N extra to the middle school. So one nurse is no longer responsible as the only licensed person in a, in a school that of a thousand plus students. They're able to rely on each other, divide the workload, consult with each other. And when you're calculating insulin dose in the hospital, in a doctor's office, you have another nurse to consult with, to make sure that your calculations are correct. Well, now our nurses have somebody to be able to do that with. And I just generally feel that it makes the entire school safer. We've also added two travel nurses. These nurses are full-time nurses that provide support to our eleven public schools and our four private schools. They have filled in as a long-term sub for Spry. Rebecca Hazen is one of our travel nurses, that she actually had to open Spry Middle School, never knowing anything about Spry, never being a middle school nurse, and she did a beautiful job, and we felt that the school was safe in her hands until Aslam could come back. And she was actually, she was happy for Aslam that she could come back, but then she was a little sad because she really felt like Spry was her family. And I speak personally, I know how wonderful that feels as a former Spry nurse. And our other travel nurse, Rebecca Hazen, she has been an amazing resource to all of our nurses too, filling in for short-term nurse absences, helping with vision and hearing screens, especially with Rebecca, she has been trained to care for medically frail students. Our medically frail population at Webster is growing, or just students with medical needs, and she has been able to, at a moment's notice, at five o'clock in the morning, if I say to her, well, guess what, I don't need you here, I need you there, oh, can you meet this child at the bus stop, you know, and can you do this? And she's like, I got this, yes. So her positive attitude is amazing. And she's also, along with some of our substitutes, nurses being able to provide one-to-one nursing care when their one-to-one nurses call in or to accompany medically frail students on the many field trips that our, our district takes. Jim was sharing about DC, we sent two nurses on that strip, on that trip. And then all of the field trips that were taken, every single field trip basically required a nurse to go because there was a student with complex medical issues that required a nurse. In previous years, that would have been so hard to do, but we were able to do that. So this flexibility has just allowed, allowed us to, I feel, meet the, the medical needs of our population. Some highlights, Jillian Sweeney, I don't know if it probably was covered before, was the recipient of a Golden Apple Award earlier in the year. So proud of her, and anybody that knows her knows how compassionate she is, and it doesn't surprise me at all. The Schrader Health Team is creating a prayer and meditation room to focus on diversity and meet the spiritual needs of all of our students in the school. It's a private room with a carpet and a dim light and a wall hanging, and we're still working on furnishing it so that any student can do it as a non-denominational prayer and meditation room. The Plank South School was the lucky recipient of a surprise, the Department of Health Audit, Immunization Audit. It's like every other year. And I'm proud to say that our Plank South School passed with flying colors. The auditor also added a note commenting on Michelle Smoyer-Mallow and how impressed she was with her organizational skills and her intense knowledge of the very complex public health laws as it pertains to immunization, so kudos to Michelle. Another wonderful thing that has been brought to my attention was that our U P K teachers at Schlegel Road went to our health team and pleaded with them to help them with a very serious problem in their classrooms. And it appeared that students were going a little overboard with nose picking, and they had, needed a little help from the school nurse. So Rachel Rock took it upon herself to develop a lesson plan with the help of a book called The Secret Life of Boogers, and she took to the classroom and taught students the science behind boogers, why you shouldn't pick, pick your nose with a bare finger, the proper blowing nose etiquette, and brought humor to it too. And also, if, if it needed a little help, that you should utilize a ghost to help you remove the booger, and a ghost is a tissue that you put over your nose when you're blowing your nose. She also developed, she also developed a bulletin board right outside the health office that has all the characters from the book in it and highlights the many, many different lessons that she taught. It was so successful in U P K that the kindergarten teachers implored her to come also, and I think the first grade teachers too. So she's taking it on the road. But none of this would have been, she wouldn't have been able to do this if she didn't have the support in the health office. And I, I encourage you, if you ever stop by Schlegel to see, to, to see this wonderful thing. She did get a call from a mother that said that she thanked her very much because that her, her oldest child, it was either a U P K or a kindergartner, was actually teaching the younger sibling on how to properly blow the, blow the nose and to use the ghost, so. I thank you very much, and I hope you all have a very wonderful holiday.
Thank you very much, Michelle. And first of all, I'd like to say, well, it's probably a good thing you didn't have slides for pictures of that, so.
No, I wanted it. I wanted to show you the bulletin board.
I love it. So you were able to bring health, science, and E L A literacy altogether, that's fantastic.
Isn't that great?
Did you just tie in the next report?
I did, I was trying to set them up, absolutely.
I saw that.
Well, I do want to say a huge shout out to our entire nursing staff and all of our health aides that has been an incredible couple of years. I know we've honored you and said a few things in the past, but you can never say it enough, and really, words can't sum up how amazing your entire staff is.
I agree, they are great.
They really are. And a highlight for you, you're an incredible advocate. You are an incredibly skilled professional yourself and an amazing leader, and we just want you to know how much we thank you so much, so, thanks. And Jim and Heather, thank you both very much as well, and thanks for your report. Appreciate it. I just got a couple last little things, and then we'll go on to the next report, yeah. Thank you, guys. All right, just a reminder for our families that the district is required to conduct an annual emergency preparedness early release drill, and this year that drill will be on Fridays, December twenty-third. Buses will depart earlier than they typically do, so watch your school newsletters for the exact timing or visit our website for those, for that news story. Two more. This is a last reminder, but the community vote on the proposed capital improvement project is coming up one week from tonight, or one week from today, I should say, on Tuesday, December thirteenth. Polls will be open from six A M. to nine P M. at the Webster Schrader High School gym. You're going to hear a presentation on all of that is included in the proposed project from Assistant Superintendent for Business, Brian Freeman, in just a few minutes, so stay tuned for that. Community members should also keep an eye out for the newsletters arriving via U P S mail this week. Some of you already got those, thank you, Janice. And if you haven't already received one, please just let us know, and we'll make sure that we mail one out to you. And I look forward to seeing everyone in the community members on next Tuesday. Last, but certainly not least, our district had the opportunity to get into the holiday spirit over the weekend by marching with our One Webster P T S A float, our One Webster marching band, and our fantastic transportation department during the annual Parade of Lights throughout the village. And our float featured holiday greetings in different languages, reflecting the events around the world theme. And thanks to Webster Blogger and also one of our employers, and she, she helps sub with us, Missy Rosenberg, for these, did these pictures of the festivities that are up there on the screen. And we look forward to seeing all of you again in 2023, and that ends my report for And yes, and now, if we could have our wonderful guests who are going to speak to us tonight on our health and education departments and give us a report. So I will let Mr. Striggi, if you don't mind, Sean Striggi is our athletic director and our Director of Athletics and Health and Physical Education at Webster Schrader High School, and he will introduce all of your teammates.
Thank you. Thanks, first of all, for having us here and, and for all you do for all of our students and our staff. Sean Striggi, Director of Health, P E, and Athletics for Schrader and Spry, speaking tonight on behalf of my work counterpart and better half, Steve LaMonica, who's not able to be here. And I'm excited to share the chairs this evening with our lead teachers and some wonderful educators, who are going to introduce themselves and where they teach.
I'm used to microphone, I'm used to screaming in a gym. Matt Potts, I'm here at Spry Middle School. I've been here for, when Willink opened, I was at Thomas Middle when it was there, but then when Willink opened, I went over here, so I've been here for about twenty-two, twenty-three years.
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years.
I'm Chris Otle, and I'm very grateful for this microphone. I teach at Willink Phys Ed, I've been there since the day it opened, so, thank you.
I'm Rob Reuler, I've been a part of the district for twenty-six years, I think. I was at Clem South as an elementary phys ed teacher, and now I'm at the high school. I have three kids that come through here, and I'm grateful for all of your help and volunteering, and it's, it's just, need to be here tonight, it's fun.
Hi, I'm Mindy Brown. I guess since we're giving our accolades, this is my twenty-third year here in the district, and Thomas Middle, and then Thomas High School, Spry, and now Willink, so.
And I'm Rachel Warner, I've been teaching, this is my eleventh year, and I've only been at Thomas High School.
Well, we are excited to share a little bit about health and P E. I don't know if the slides are able to pop up in front of us, or if they're.
Yeah, just hit the, if you hit the arrow, I think it should pop.
Hey, there we go. Now we're, we're in business. This was going to be our, I guess, our table of contents, and if, we did do some rehearsals both via Zoom and, and we got a little bit off track, and, and what was nice about those conversations was actually hearing the anecdotes from our, our teachers and to hear about how some of our ideas and, and our structure benefits them and benefits the students throughout, throughout the year. So we're kind of hoping it does go off on that tangent a bit, but we're going to talk about our teams, our curriculum, what the requirements are, some of our special events, which are the highlights of our year, I think, our partnerships, our wonderful facilities, and then what's on the horizon. Our, our team, we're starting with phys ed here, and, and here we have three of our P E lead teachers. We have fourteen high school teachers, ten middle school teachers. We have 14 high school teachers, 10 middle school teachers, 16 elementary. Two of those are adapted phys ed teachers that travel from building to building. And there's five lead teachers in that group in whole. And the, I was going to launch that group and say, we are able to meet both in small groups, PLCs, and then larger groups broken up by departments and schools semi-frequently. And those meetings are probably the highlight of my month a lot of times. It starts out, you know, either early in the morning or right after their workday and it can be a little frazzled at first, but if you spend about five minutes with any of our phys ed staff, they diffuse group settings in groups about as well as anybody. So it becomes a very joyous group to be around for certain. I was going to have our phys ed folks talk about the curriculum. If you wanted to go ahead and chime in on what's in front of you here. What you see up there is a handful of the, the ideas that we implement throughout the year. We try not to call our curriculum the activities that we do because they're doing different activities all the time. You might see dance. Right now, they're doing dance at the middle school, so we were talking about that today. But throughout all of the, the different skills that they, they try to work through, they, they plan on quite a few different activities. So I was going to have our phys ed folks go ahead and start that conversation.
These microphones throw me off. Yeah, we, I've been in the middle school so long that we just, we try to change things and move things around and, and COVID even helped us a little bit, too. Like, we do, we do traditional sports. Like, we'll do our basketballs, our volleyball, stuff like that. But, and we have big classes and we still try to work it out so we can get tennis in. We do tennis in the spring or in the fall. We started doing disc golf, a little something different. Because not everybody is, you know, a basketball player, football player, or soccer player. I'm going to try to do some different things. We have archery as an option, an option, different things. But Sean just mentioned, we did just restart our dance unit. And much to some of the children's chagrin, yes, but they realize that it's, they always like to complain. And then you watch them do it and they got smiles on their faces and all that kind of stuff, even though they're doing the, what I call the sleeve gloves, where they're like this. But, but we want kids to feel comfortable. We want them to get a lot of experience, a lot of different things. We want them to enjoy activity and to give them different options. I even said to them, I, I was, you might think square dancing, and square dancing has its purpose, you know, where you learn how to do things and you learn all that. But I went to a wedding a bunch of years ago that they did square dancing at the wedding. It was actually John McGurk's wedding. I don't know if he's a kid from Fairport. So I go, you could use this, too, later on in your life. So, I mean, just, that's what we want. We want them comfortable, we want them enjoying activity, and we want them exposed to a lot of stuff. And that's what we kind of do. And, and it comes along with the standards also. So we like to do it as well.
I'm like an attempt at speaking as well. So in the middle school, we follow our national guidelines of teaching a variety of activities to students so that they'd be competent and most proficient in a few. So we reach out in that variety everywhere from dance to individual sports, to team sports, racket, adventure, aquatic, fitness, and we just finished exploring the mat. So we, we cover a variety of areas for our students so that they can develop that connection to be physically active for life. And, you know, we also hold a fitness philosophy to what we do. So it doesn't matter what unit we're in or what lesson we're teaching, it always starts with that fitness component for them to build on and we have that consistently across our curriculum. And I'd also add that a benefit from our PLCs, it's kind of echoing what Matt was saying, is that as we collaborate together, as we have share outs together, that we are building our units deeper and richer for our students. We're coming up with new ideas to do traditional things regardless of you've been teaching 20-plus years. You infuse a little bit of something else that somebody's trying to do and it's returned deeper and it's better for the students. We've come up with pretty interesting ideas like basketball's been around forever, but we decided to chime in with the whole March Madness field that's in college and decided to have the Willink March Madness. And it was an idea that came out of PLC. We develop those teams, we allow them to go up and pick team names from colleges and they connect with a college name and we develop a whole tournament bracket and we play music and it's very festive and exciting. So that's just one extra thing I'll add about the PLCs and the benefit that we've gleaned from it.
That is fun. There were some arguments at our dinner table. I have twins about the March Madness and I missed a couple of calls here and there and they weren't, they were upset about that, but the, the middle school years were, March Madness was a hit at our house, for sure. I think, you know, I'll speak a little bit about the high school level and, and really what we get to do is, I, I think it's awesome. We have huge support from, from the district. You know, one of the things I'm, we just finished in October was going off campus and utilizing the parks. And so we go to a variety of places, you know, Webster Park, Whiting Road, we hit all different trails within Webster Park. And there, there's so many opportunities to teach about all different aspects that can connect with so many different kids. So if it's mindfulness and reflecting on where you were, I do a lesson where we, we think about all the positive parts of our lives and we, we sit down and we write them on a leaf and we, you know, I see kids connecting and having discussions and going to corners and, and then they release this leaf and let, you know, let their, you know, some of them, let their experiences last forever at the bridge right at Webster Park. To me, it's an amazing event. So I think that the resources that the district provides is huge for us. That's tremendous. As we saw the facilities this past year at Thomas, it has allowed us to have access on the fields at all times of the hours. And if it rains, it's not going to be wet. It's perfect. We have an amazing situation at Thomas for that, for facilities. We're constantly creating opportunities for kids, like we, we get to walk across the street and go skating. So this, you know, we kind of, there's a theme throughout the year where we go from, you know, we're going tennis and golf and then we're out in the woods, we're seeing the fall colors and we're being reflective of where we are as a person. And then we, I connected with the AP Environmental Teacher and I said, hey, how can I, how can I get this even better? You know, and so he shared with me some resources that you could use that he's done in trail hikes. So this next upcoming year, we're going to, we're going to increase it. We're going to talk about how our, our decisions that we make in the, on a regular basis can affect, you know, the water, can affect, you know, the woods. How does that affect us and how do we have, you know, I go over Almerald Ashport and how is, how is that affecting you? And there's so many opportunities out there in our hiking unit. And then, like I said, we, now we're going to go skating and I, I love what I do. So I, I feel like it's, this is, this is the greatest job in the world. I get to go across the street and, and we're, you know, we'll have the music going, we're teaching ice skating, some kids have been on the ice, some kids have never been on the ice. The, the music's blaring, it's holiday music. It's awesome. You know, we pretend like we're at Rockefeller Center. You know, today, we were in the pool and we're doing canoeing and kayaking and I reflect and I said, hey, you could be swimming, right? And do you really want to be swimming? Or we're canoeing and hike, or canoeing and kayaking? And, and so now we're getting them in the canoes and kayaks and they're learning, they're, they're getting us, today was assessment day, so we're going over stroke development, everything else, but we decided to throw on a little Italian musics around the gondola. And so the music's blaring, the lifeguard's like...
Now in Venice.
You know, yeah, it was amazing. And I, and I think that, I think what I really want to share with you is that our students are amazing. And the track that we have, I teach Lifetime, now I've been a lacrosse coach here for 20-plus years and I was, you know, football coach, I'm, I'm a coach. But I get to work with a different clientele in Lifetime. These are, you're not traditional students. You're students that maybe aren't into having, you know, footballs thrown at their head. That's not what they're going to do ever in their life. So I get to connect with them. But then I peek in the door and I see the volleyball matches today and they're outstanding. We have refs, the kids are reffing themselves, the play is amazing. I, I'm envious, I wish I could, you know, get a chance to taste that a little bit, but I love my children, too. And I think, I think that what I'm trying to explain in a nutshell is that we're doing really good things. We have a lot of kids active. I had, the lifeguard said, I just can't believe how many kids are participating and you don't even have to, yes, that's what we have. I'm sure it's similar at Schrader. I, I have, I share an office with, my assistant coach just got hired this past year, Mr. Jobson, and he came from a different district where he said, you guys, you have no idea how nice it is here. These kids all participate. And I, yeah. And so now we kind of keep enhancing it. So now the opportunities that you provide with your financial assistance, having bus drivers is amazing. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you understand how cool this is that we get to do is, you know, I get to drop off at Whiting Road and we cut up the west trail and we head all the way out to the pier and, and we go all the way out to the pier and we reflect and we get to share what Webster is. And, and I get to share that with all these kids. And to me, it's, it's, it's just a great spot we are in in phys ed and I couldn't be happier for, for so many of these kids. Because it is taking that kid that maybe would have sat in the back in a soccer game and never touched a ball and we're creating opportunities that they can find and passions that they can find for the rest of their lives. And that's what I keep trying to find. Find a passion, find something that you love to do on a regular basis, even just a hike. And, and realize that if you do it on a regular basis, you're going to have this healthier lifestyle, you're going to have a, a better mindset for everything else in life. So I, I could talk for hours. I, I just love what, I love what we do and I, I think it's, we have the right equipment, we have the right facilities and you, you keep supporting us and, and we are super grateful for that. So thank you. Sorry.
You can see what a PLC with Mr. Reller probably looks like. A lot of passion, a lot of passion, a lot of information, but we're thrilled to have him involved in being one of our lead teachers. You can see the requirements for, we meet the requirements for the minutes per PE, but it's divided up a little differently. So at the elementary level, they have 45-minute classes and they meet two days in a four-day cycle. The middle school is once every three days for about 58 or 59 minutes. And at the high school, it's 51 minutes and they meet two out of four days as well. Some of the, the more popular special events that you may have seen, this picture here is from this year's fun run, fourth grade fun run at Charles Sexton Park. We utilize, just like Mr. Reller mentioned, we utilize a lot of Webster, you know, with our, with our special events, whether it's cooperative games on the high school campuses or it's at Webster Park or, or in some of our other parks. We really try to utilize the community as much as possible and allow for our kids to, to thrive in that community environment as well. There's the sixth grade pumpkin run, which my son ran in this year and told me what his time was and then said, I bet you can't beat that. And he was right. Because then we had to try, I had to try to beat him in the turkey try, it didn't go well. And then obviously our, our middle school's doing middle school March Madness and we connect with the Empire State Games for the physically challenged as well. This year was at Brockport. And we have a host of special guests that come in and help us in our gymnasiums as well. Some of the local partnerships, you see, one of our, our standards is, is to teaching, teaching through the community or learning about community resources and connecting. At the elementary level, it's have you ever gone bowling? And where might you have done that? Then most often, it's, it's in the gym. Is there a first time bowling or, or their first exposure to bowling at the high school level? Obviously, they're getting out in the community and doing it much differently there. And we're thrilled to have the, the connection we have with Webster Parks and Recreation, Leaguefront Soccer, and, and obviously some of our other first-class facilities, which we're lucky to have. I was walking into Thomas one day and a teacher was walking out, it was early in the fall and it was pretty early. And it was a little chilly out there and they said, aren't we lucky that we have this turf? So even when it's raining, we can come outside. It was interesting to hear the kids' response to that. But they were, they were thrilled to be outside either way. So I'm excited to introduce you, transition from phys ed to our health staff. It's a, it's a small but mighty group. We have four middle school teachers, three high school teachers, and our lead teacher as well. And, and obviously, I'm going to turn it over to Mindy and Rachel, who will take you through what health looks like in our district.
So we are a skills-based program, which sometimes it seems a little different from how we remember health back in the day. But if you look at the list, it is phenomenal what we are able to, the amount that we're able to get to kids with these, all of these different skills. The idea with the skills, integrating, integrating functional knowledge, which Rachel's going to talk about, we are able to have that critical thinking of what does it mean to be healthy? And that's physical, mental, social health. And through all of these skills with different topics, we start with the middle school and it continues on up through the high school with age-appropriate topics. And it, it's, it's relevant, it is life, you know, in, in the moment situations that we talk about, so.
So then for the functional knowledge, we really, and that helps us build upon, oh, that's okay, why the skills are so important. So we address the actual knowledge piece, vocabulary, breaking stigma and stereotypes, using correct terminology. So if you do go to the doctor, you're really able to use that health literacy and articulate exactly what's going on and understanding when doctors or resources in the community are speaking to you, what, what's going on. We educate on resources in the community and where you can get valuable information and correct information. And then to, to learn the potential dangers of why it's important to focus on this. So by understanding the knowledge, we see the dangers and we understand the importance of the skill. It gives them the understanding of why we're doing this. And then it's a lifelong process. It's not something, just like phys ed, that you're just going to do in high school, but we hope you continue on always assessing all the different areas of your health and your personal health.
So in the middle school, students receive 20 weeks of health in grade six and seven. At the high school, they take one, one semester of health. Typically, it's our 10th graders, but the last few years, we've had more 11th graders taking it as well, depending on the rest of their class load. We have a lot of partnerships in health as well. And as we were listing these out, we were starting to think about the connections that these partnerships and the people behind the partnerships make in our classrooms and how strong that, that allows our educational practice to, to maintain to be. We've, we've got new people in our district, new to us. Delphi Rise is new to us in the last few years. That's a great partnership. And Bavona has been a great partnership for us. And then some of the other ones you see there, it, believe it or not, it's great to have resource officers that come into your class to be able to talk and join a conversation about healthy habits and about the implications of the possibility of non-healthy habits and what that looks like in a sixth grade classroom is very different than what it looks like with 10th and 11th graders, for sure. You want to add anything about any of those?
I think, I just had at the high school Willow come in and I thought it was amazing because the students put a connection to where all of their homecoming donations went to, right? So to understand not only that they donated, but what it was, what the organization is, and now they have another resource in the community. So it was kind of cool that the kids were like, oh.
Yeah, powerful, powerful conversational connections in, in our health classes and it's, it's fun to follow a student's path. If you, if you're lucky enough to observe a phys ed class, I get to do this one period and then walk into a health class another period and just see, it's about, it's about healthy habits, about wellness, and it's about presenting your best self. And we're pretty lucky to have that. So what's on the horizon for us? And we have new state standards for PE. These folks have already been implementing those for the last couple of years. They came out in March of '20. Good timing on that. And we've been implementing them since. They, they were already implemented prior. But there's a mental health focus to it, certainly in a fitness focus. And you heard Mr. Odl talk about the fact that we start most of our classes with a fitness focus, which is great. Surveying students for possible activity changes or what their interests are. We do that every, we do that periodically, but it's great to get the student voice into the phys ed classroom. A little less so at the elementary level, you know, at that level, they're just thrilled to be in the gym and it's, you know, it's the beacon of all fun in there, which is great. The high school level, they may be choosing a career path based on, you know, some, some activity that they have a heightened interest in. So for us to match that is, is crucial. Dual credit opportunities with MCC. We have an aquatics class that is a dual credit class that didn't run this year. We're hoping to run it again next year where the students actually gain, have the chance to become lifeguard certified by the Red Cross. And that's dual credit through MCC as well. And, and some of the wonderful events that we do throughout the year, we try to hit on as many of them as we possibly can. Before, actually, I'm going to, questions, certainly, but I'd be remiss if I didn't get a chance to, to thank the folks that are here with me tonight. Steve LaMonica, who actually did most of the, the connective work behind the scenes for a lot of this crew, myself, and for us to get a chance to get together. Our two athletic assistants who do a lot with, with phys ed as well, Gina and Michelle. We have a great senior staff, administrative staff that often receive phone calls at the last second and say, hey, can, can you help me with this? I don't know how to answer this question. And, and they do a great job with that. Our building principals and administrators are health advocates, yeah, healthy, healthy student advocates. And we see that every day in, in our schools. We're happy. These folks here are outstanding and it's, when I see on my calendar that I get to join one of them, like Thursday, 1 o'clock, that's right. It's, it's the highlight of my week, it really is.[1799.66] It's the highlight of my week. It really is. So it's great. And then obviously our buildings and ground staff, we interact a ton with them. They allow us to be safe inside and outside. They listen to us when we complain about there's something out of place in the gym. And they're happy to help service that. And we appreciate that. And all of you, and we appreciate you very much too. Thank you.
So great job by everybody. Really love to hear all the things, great things going on in PE. Can you tell me a little bit about what PE looks like for our physically challenged students or maybe those in our OWL program?
OWL is what I took on this year. And it's an awesome opportunity. I'm lucky. I have I have a wife at home that's a social worker, so I can bounce ideas off her. We have wonderful aides that help, tremendous aides. I just thought of that this evening. I need to thank her. I am surrounded by a really good aide. So with OWL, the goal is, you know, obviously, it's probably no different. It's just maybe a different pace. Would be to build a relationship. And then through that relationship, you know, realize that your mental health and where you can get to through exercise and activity can be rewarding, you know, it can, it's as simple as, it's just basic science. It releases endorphins. You feel better, right? So my goal being to kind of give them a little bit of each unit that we're still doing with my general education classes. But it's at a different pace. And then you have to be flexible. And realize that really one person's, you know, Swinson's joy in activity and sports is maybe quite different than mine. And there isn't a right or wrong that fits everyone. Did they have an opportunity to explore a variety of activities? Today, we were rock climbing and we were challenged, you know, and it might have been footwear. And it's like, where do I want to kind of, where do I want to, as a FIZED teacher, create this opportunity and be willing to be flexible with different parts? You know, I have to be flexible as a teacher. There is conversations with with unified kind of FIZED. We kind of dabbled with it this past year. And we'd like to kind of continue to look into how we can create either as an elective for some, maybe if I'm a, maybe, you know, one of the things I say or reflecting was I really want to tell you guys and all of us is that we have to keep kind of recruiting teachers. You know, I have conversations more and more with, hey, you'd be a good FIZED teacher. I had a girl that really wanted to come into class today that was in a study hall. And I think she kind of just wanted to be with her friends and was just looking for, and I kind of, and I said to her, someday you might be a FIZED teacher. And she said, really? And we need to recruit. So I guess the goal with unify would be, can we get athletes that maybe want an extension to their FIZED to come in and work with them and do it similar to a unified activity? So that's the conversation we're kind of figuring out this year. We kind of had something similar, but it really didn't fit. But it's a work in progress. So that's, I think, where we're at. We, I think Mr. Jobson, I don't know, and he's like, oh, man, you really promoted me. But he's a terrific adaptive teacher. I said, I'm very impressed by what you're doing with the adaptive kids. You know, creating a variety, he took them hiking, for example. He said, can I come on the bus with you to go hiking? I said, yeah, let's go. And we brought OWL kids hiking. And they almost refused to go and get out and then walk. I'm like, we have to keep walking. We have to keep walking. The bus is picking us up. That's the other thing. The bus will pick us up. We don't drop off. A lot of times I'll go to a different location. So we're going to cut all the way through to an area. So it's really, we did the Bird Sanctuary Trail that day. I think we dropped off on two fifty and we picked up over by the, you know, the north end of the North Bonds. And, you know, so that's what we're doing, trying to get them to be included more and more and find the resources to keep creating opportunities, you know. But sometimes it's just, it's just simple conversations, like we said, of the PLCs to find that, to make it work. But again, I, we're in a good space in a lot of ways. And a lot of it's to your, we owe it to you. So thank you. Any other questions? I love it. Let's keep going.
I just have a comment. Thank you. Years ago, PE class was terrifying for some students. Didn't want to play basketball and you would visit and they'd be standing in the corner. So to think outside of the box and be so inclusive is incredible and it's a joy to watch. I had the opportunity to see some of the students in the kayaks. A few of them went over. But the kids were still finding joy in tipping over and getting soaking wet. So it's, that to me means so much for these, for so many students. So thank you for bringing that joy to so many.
And I, I mean, the buses, like, I get to, I get to go to, like, the chorus concerts. I get to go to the plays. Because those are all my kids. So I, you know, that's the cool part. It's like, you know, they get to see you there and that, it means, it means the world. That's great.
I appreciate this presentation. I have a nine-year-old who is football, baseball, year-round. I try to keep him as active as possible. And he wants to learn archery. When you said archery, I was like, oh, he's going to love high school. He's one of those kids that's good at school but doesn't really like school. But if sports is there, he's all about it. So this gives me hope of, hey, guess what you get to do when you go to Willink? And guess what you can do when you go to Thomas? And it's good for me to have these images so that I can talk it up for my kids, so that they can look forward to that kind of experience. Because every now and then he'd rather be playing video games and not being active. I'm like, but if you stay active, you can do all these great things. So it's great to hear about. So thank you.
When our ninth graders find out that they're able to choose their path in high school, maybe less so on 10th grade, they kind of figure it out, you know, which one's my friend's going to be in? Or which teacher do I like the best? But you see their faces. They're like, I get to choose the activities that I do. It's pretty powerful. So it's great.
Thank you. I appreciate you highlighting the facilities as well. We get a lot of questions on the facilities. And, you know, baseball's only three months and whatever. And I try to explain to people, they're used unless there's a foot of snow on the ground, like legit, all day, every day. Intermurals, whatever it is, and the town uses it, section five uses it, right, Sean? They use our facilities quite a bit. So I appreciate you highlighting that as well, especially as we have the project coming up. Because we really do use our facilities to the best of our ability. So thank you.
Thank you.
The Thomas Tenth Courts is the home court. It's just right there. Why would we join a club?
And I just want to say thank you. I'm looking at six champions. Six champions, not only of physical education and health, but also of education in general, but people. The quality of people that are sitting right there at that table is amazing. So thank you guys for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, can I have a motion to approve the health and physical education report tonight as presented? So move Charlie, second, Mike, all in favor? Thank you so much. That's great.
And you got the jokes now from the fifth grade presentation. I love it.
All right. Now we're on to our board business. We have the September and October 2022 Treasurers Report.
So I'm swinging around here for this, because I got the slides loaded for the budget update.
Okay, no problem.
So, yeah, we have September and October Treasurers Reports. Just to point out, you could see our cash flow is improving with the advent of tax revenue coming in and some additional state aid. So you'll see in both summaries, you see our investments increasing, especially in the month of October as more of the tax revenue came in. So more chance for investing. Pretty typical expenditure months. And, you know, the other accounts, school lunch, federal, are always lagging behind the start of school year. We're waiting for approval on a lot of those grants. So still not a lot going on in the other funds besides the general fund at this time. Happy to answer any questions on the executive summaries.
Is the cash flow where you expected it to be, Brian, for October?
Yes, yeah.
So no surprise.
It's very cyclical, very predictable.
All right. Motion to approve the September and October 2022 Treasurers Report as presented. Shiana, second, Jen, all in favor? Aye, seven, nine. And this is our capital project update, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. That's, I had the wrong thing loaded up. Yeah. So I just, my screen has a different order. So the, I had a hold in place for a possible resolution. So what ended up happening right before Thanksgiving, the district was notified that one of the electrical contractors who had won the elementary bid almost two years ago now in January, it was January twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, that the board accepted that bid as the lowest responsible. We were notified by their surety bond holder that they were calling that in, in essence. And that we could no longer make payments to them, that the payments would have to go to the surety bond holder because they were defaulting on projects elsewhere. So we were trying to figure that out. We weren't sure if we were going to have to do a resolution because the board, you know, in essence, you approved the contract and they are now defaulting on it. So we didn't need a resolution, but I thought it was worthy enough to still give you guys an update. Because in essence, they've defaulted and the district is taking the work over. And what does that process look like? Because this is like the future of construction for the foreseeable future with, in essence, they went out of business. So this might happen again down the road. So I wanted just to go over what the process is. We do not have to rebid. In essence, what we do is we have some time now. The surety bond holder had to come into the district to verify what work is left. We put a dollar value on it. They agree with what we have. And we got that worked out over the last couple of weeks. So now what we do is take that official work that is left to be done and in essence, shop it around. We get quotes and kind of do a vetting of who could perform this work quickly and what their price is. So that's what we're doing right now, getting quotes from other electrical contractors that could do it. We've had a couple of contractors come in and do walkthroughs and look at what needs to be done. So you won't see a rebid because we're just taking the work over. And I wanted to keep you updated on that.
Okay. Is it campus?
Yeah.
Is that who's managing the, as far as making sure that whoever bids this, that they're qualified to do the work?
Right. We're sending it pretty much to everybody who responded, who generally responds to, on the electrical contracts. There's about a half a dozen companies. So we've kind of kicked it out to all of them. So like, you know, numbers two through six that responded in twenty-twenty-one, we've, you know, said, hey, you got people around? What's your price tag for X, Y, and Z to be done?
And so there's no, nothing needs to be done by the board as long as it falls within those dollar values that were originally?
Correct. We're just alerting you that we've, in essence, canceled the contract and taken over the work.
Okay. And taking over the work is really just finding someone else to do it?
Right. So that's, you know, yep, that's a group effort between the facilities team and campus and the architects.
Okay. And so we're not actually doing the work ourselves. We're just?
Correct. Yep. When we say take over, it means we're canceling your contract and finding somebody else to do it.
Thank you. Sorry. So then the tax exemption information too. I see it now. Yep, no, I know.
Brian, do you think there's only about two hundred thousand left to be done? I mean, that's what we haven't paid.
Correct. And that's what we had to verify. Once we got that notice and I knew I'd have to update you guys, that's with Thanksgiving being in there, kind of delayed it a little bit. We, that's what we had to verify, the exact dollar matches to the work that they haven't done yet for that surety bond holder to say, yep, you guys were, you're legally allowed to cancel the contract and take over the work.
Thank you.
All right. So next up is for information only as well right now. Back in August, the governor signed a bill to change the amounts for the limited income senior exemption and disabled with limited income exemption. So I kind of highlighted for you, back in twenty-ten, Webster CSD adopted the current maximum and minimum thresholds. So from zero dollars to twenty-nine thousand dollars in earnings, resident could get a fifty percent exemption on their property taxes. And then it goes from there, twenty-nine to thirty, all the way up from thirty-six, five to thirty-seven, four is the last income threshold. So new thresholds were passed by the governor in August, making the minimum from zero to fifty thousand dollars. So it jumped by, each level jumped by an average of about sixty-three to sixty-five percent more what the exemption could be for. So this one's a difficult exemption to kind of nail down. I know exactly how many properties on the tax rolls this year, you know, one hundred and twenty-three in Penfield and three hundred and ninety-seven in the town of Webster in Ontario and Walworth, I think have one combined. So really not consequential to moving the needle on anything. So the problem with the difficulty of projecting, what happens if we adopt this exemption? Like, how much does it get shifted to other, you know, people that don't get it? So that's the way exemptions work. One residence gets it, another, all the other residences pick it up. So it's very difficult because it's all based on income and applying every year. So one year you can get it, the next year you cannot. Because, you know, maybe somebody cashes in, you know, a retirement savings that puts them over the threshold. So then that property's gone. So this exemption's fluid. It won't be like, okay, if we adopt this, everything's going to go up in unison. Because some people drop off naturally year to year, if that makes sense. So what I just tried to do is like, all right, the exemption levels are staying, going up sixty-five percent. What does sixty-five percent more mean? What does that shift? So that's my best mathematical guess right now of what this would do if we adopt it. Right now, there is not a lot of districts adopting it that, when we've had the discussions. And the towns are kind of holding steady right now. In essence, what everybody's doing is waiting to see what Monroe County does. And it's going to kind of trickle down from there. But the next step would be if we're interested in taking this exemption on, have to hold a public hearing and the board would pass a resolution to opt in. You know, you could do it as a phase in. It doesn't have to be, there's a couple of different levels. I just wanted to share with you the maximums as well. I think if the county adopts it, they'd like everybody to be uniform. Because it just, that way the system itself doesn't get messed up. Because if you got one person doing one thing and another group doing another, it just leaves more opportunities for mistakes. So that's the process. And that's the best information we have on this exemption right now as far as hard data of what it would mean and the impact to other taxpayers.
If you were not to adopt this, would it just continue with the regular exemption as we've had so far?
Correct.
Okay. So this wouldn't require a necessary change. It would just increase the exemption?
Right. You'd have to hold, to increase to the new levels. You'd still have to go through the public hearing.
But it wouldn't hurt those that currently have it?
Correct. Because they'd still be in those twenty-ten limits that we've adopted.
Since twenty-ten?
Yep.
Okay, the existing one. Have you had any feedback from anyone? Has anyone from the community reached out?
Not specifically on this, no. I don't think, it's still kind of fresh. You know, when it got passed in August, it's kind of like, you know, dead time, like nobody, you know, it's summer. Nobody's really paying attention to that kind of thing in the cycle. It might come up like around, you know, regular tax roll time, tax exemption, you know, star form information. I have not seen any news stories on it. That usually garners a little interest too. So, yeah, I haven't, that fluidity. The only questions I've ever gotten on this exemption in my eight years here have been people trying to understand why they lost the exemption. in, uh, my eight years here have been people, uh, trying to understand why they lost the exemption. Um, and it's because they have to verify their income, you know, and that fluctuates, um, considerably. Also fluctuates if somebody moves into the house that has income.
Okay.
Uh, now that counts, so there's, it's, you know, it's not cut and dry, and there is movement.
Okay.
So if, just for information, if there's other questions or anything, please feel free, shoot me an email or reach out.
Thank you. Capital Project overview?
So, um, I just attached the presentation, um, that Mr. Nina and myself, um, have been going around the district. We've done, um, let's say, four PTSA meetings, um, we've gotten to every building, um, every department. Got a couple more buildings to go, you know, um, done some with the economic development groups as well. So I just want to give you an update of what we're showing and what we're talking about. Um, those are, is the slides, very similar to what we've, we've done before, um, just to show you, uh, what we're doing. A couple of the other updates I just wanted to give you is, um, some of the, we're trying, um, with the website as best as we can to keep it alive, active, um, to questions. So because the flyer that went out, uh, received, uh, maybe four or five phone calls in the last twenty-four hours asking what the OWL program was. And, you know, we get used to living it every day, you know, we're part of the ground floor of creating it. So, uh, you know, it was oblivious to me that we didn't do a really good job explaining maybe what the OWL program was. Um, because that was the feedback we were getting from the phone calls and a couple of emails from the community. So we have now updated the Capital Project website to include more detailed information for, um, the community for what the OWL program is, what it does, when it started, and, um, some of the reasoning behind. We also put that in the frequently asked questions as well. So, you know, just trying to be responsive to what's out there and the questions we're getting.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Brian. Sounds good. Yeah, especially because OWL to me is something, it's, it's such a, it's something to be so proud of that our district does. And so I think this is also a really great opportunity to spread that information because unless you have someone in that program, you have no idea
Right.
the value that we're, yeah, bringing into our district for those things.
Right, and I totally, you know, one of the conversations I had is like, you know what, you're a hundred percent right. Totally take it for granted, I was like, well, assumed everybody saw the one Webster minute from twenty-nineteen. You know, that's probably not the case. Uh, so, you know, it was good feedback and hopefully we've now put that out there where, uh, people can get some better answers.
That's great, Brian, thank you, awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Those, the, the presentations at the, um, buildings and all the different community presentations in PTSA has been fantastic. They've been great questions, um, and I think it's helpful when they come and they ask a variety of questions. A lot of times when we're in the building, it's pertaining to their building, but that's good because that's what we, what we're hopeful. Thanks, Brian.
Budget kickoff.
Yeah, so, um, you know, budget, gotta get, uh, talk about that a little bit. So I, I just wanted to make you aware, um, some of the things that have kind of happened under the radar perhaps, um, in the last couple of months, uh, with budget to see what's going on for twenty-three, twenty-four. So I just want to give you a, a quick overview, a quick update, um, on state updates, state aid predictions, and what we know is happening already in the area of pensions and benefits. So, um, election for the state offices is over. Um, so I always like to say, will that change any of the projections for state aid rules or regulations to be on the lookout for? Because, you know, most of the time the elections, you know, the wind of who, uh, wants what sways that sometimes, and there's always budgetary ramifications for education. Um, we are seeing some worker shortages at SED across many departments. Um, I've shared, we've changed our pro- had our project manager since the summertime, changed three times for building aid. Um, and I thought my emails were getting blocked to pupil transportation. So we had our cybersecurity group look into it, I was like, I know I'm whitelisted a lot because, you know, on my laptop are the keys to the proverbial kingdom. So, yeah, it's a lot more difficult, um, for me to get things filtered. And so I called and, and the, uh, poor guy that runs the department goes, nope, you're not getting blocked, I'm just the only one left.
Oh, no.
Um, so he goes, you're in the pile for, to get your contracts approved. So, you know, that's impacting some of our day-to-day stuff, we're seeing delays. Will we see that play out in kind of any of our projections or, you know, a lag even more in some of that stuff? That's why I bring that up. Um, you know, trying to look at what state aid is doing, it's tough to make those predictions about the future, the great Yogi Berra. Um, so foundation aid, every November, a foundation aid update gets slid out in November. Um, so historically, we've always ignored these because the governor had always done whatever they wanted. Um, and aid was frozen, and then we got our trickle. Um, so that really made January the first kickoff for state aid. But the way the law changed last year, um, we've paid attention to this a little bit more and to see how reliable this is. And, um, you know, this, based on that nicer lawsuit, has finally come into fruition. Next year would be the final phase in of the three-year phases. So twenty-three, twenty-four is the third and final year of the phase in of the foundation aid of, uh, what is owed. And so there's a strong enough commitment to think, well, these numbers might be decently, um, accurate. So I was expecting when I opened that up in November, it's like, okay, third year, here's our amount, we're owed probably four point nine million dollars. Opened up these numbers. I was like, okay, forty-four point one million dollars seems a bit high. Um, and that's seven point six million dollars, I was thinking four point nine. Um, so it's a twenty-one percent increase over what we're receiving for foundation aid this year. So it's very much piqued my interest. Fortunately, I have to wait until January to see what they've done to the formula of where that number came from. Um, because I, you know, our enrollment has stayed relatively flat, um, so it can't be a student count. Um, our free and reduced has gone up with, through direct cert, like, two and a half percent. Not enough to add two and a half million dollars. Um, so it's gonna be very curious, um, to see what this looks like come January. So I just want to share with you because it's out there. Um, all the districts, uh, foundation aid i- is out there living on the state website. So, you know, it's, this is public, it's hard to find, but just want to hone that in. Okay, this is gonna be an interesting budget, um, with some state aid projections, yeah.
Brian, do you know if the other districts saw some more increase that they weren't expecting?
Uh, yeah, a couple of them did, so.
So it looks like it's the formula which you don't
Yeah, which we don't
privy to yet.
Correct, and see what, what data points are really driving this.
So, well, that formula, is it changing and then it's gonna change to this formula from here to?
I, I, no, I, we have no indication that that is it. There's gotta be something in one of those data points that something changed, um,
For us.
for us significantly that, to get that increase.
Because the formula will, is going to change, correct, now that it, or that we're?
There's always talk of that, like, oh, let's get a committee to really, let's update the data points, like, we're using census data that's outdated. What can we do? It's free and reduced, really the best indicator, um, for, for economic disadvantage. There's always that conversation ongoing, um, so, but it, there's nothing on the books right now that this formula will be changing.
Is it something, sorry, I'm just
No, go ahead.
Is it something that we should as a district be advocating for, a different formula, a consistent formula?
Well, I mean, for us, the formula's finally kind of working.
Stays.
Right, I'm like, because we need some consistency.
Right. I think, you, you know, what I could say is just, in this age, we shouldn't be lagging with the data as much as we do. Um, we should have, be able to, it's that, like, it's a three-year lag for some of the data. Should be able to have more up to date and keep the formula more up to date, um, I think, more than anything. So, um, that's what that looks like for the state, um, some early budget factors. Um, on the employee retirement system, that is going up, right now we pay eleven point six on the pension side for that, going up to thirteen point one. Um, that final budget will be based on final salary projections for the employees that are in that. Um, wasn't shocked that that was going up, um, year to year because of the losses from the market. What I am shocked is TRS is actually going down. I thought they would have similar increases based on market losses, but they are not. They're gonna go, um, somewhere right now between nine point five to ten percent from ten point two nine, so that's a, a surprising decrease. And then healthcare, what we do know, what's been approved by both RASHP, um, one and two. Retiree plans, a majority of them are going to remain flat, um, due to competition in the marketplace for Exelis. The ones that are with RASHP one, however, do not have that competition and are going up, but that is a smaller percentage. And then our overall, our RASH two consortium, uh, we're looking at six point eight percent increases as we've seen claims, uh, claims, uh, rise, um, now that there are no hospital restrictions or doctor's office restrictions. Um, other budget items, you know, sales tax is looking like it's gonna maintain, interest earnings looking like to increase. Um, what's the reevaluation in Penfield gonna do to our tax cap growth factor when we get that number in the next few weeks? Um, expenditure side, we have three contracts, we're gonna be negotiation, negotiating right now for next year for about eleven hundred employees, and minimum wage is going up one dollar January first. So from thirteen twenty to fourteen twenty, so trying to guesstimate what that looks like next January as part of this budget will also be, uh, part of it, so. You know, budget, funding available minus the requests we get, hopefully it balances. So next, um, couple budgetary things for you guys to be, uh, on the lookout for is I'm gonna be gathering our tax cap calculation, uh, data points. We have the long-range planning in January, that workshop, and then we're continuing to meet with our budget stakeholders through this month and next. That's where we are for budget.
So for next, for this coming budget season, will we, um, with that budget advisory, will we use Thought Exchange?
So, yep, we're working on, got some ideas of, um, how to utilize Thought Exchange because, I mean, there is no better bang for the buck on getting response and feedback than that platform. So maybe tweak some of the questions a little bit, I know, um, having some conversations with Joe Montemaro and, you know, look to see what some other districts did, maybe tweak the questions a little bit and, um, see if we can hone in and, um, you maybe even try to get better data points.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's
Yeah, that was great, yeah.
Could do it from the comfort of your home.
Yeah.
Don't have to get up during a snowstorm and drive someplace, so. Yeah, and that's all I got for this evening. Thanks, Brian.
All right, we're moving on to the first read of the personnel policies. I'll just sort of explain again what we've been doing. Um, we enlisted the services of Erie One Bosse's to completely revamp and go through our old manual. We are in the process of going through the first draft that they sent us. So some of these sections are quite lengthy. Personnel was one, we really felt that it would be much more transparent, but it would also be much more beneficial to the rest of the board to see, you know, the sheer volume, but to also take a look at every single one of those policies that we've been looking at for months. And it was helpful because we were able to see things that we hadn't seen before. So Dave was able to make some additions and make some changes that the board mentioned when we had that workshop. And some things that we brought up will actually be addressed in other sections. So it was a much better way, I think, to be transparent and open in conversations and have everyone really take a look at it. Um, so most of our questions and things were addressed last week. I don't think there's really anything else unless someone had something, but it just seemed to be a little bit more cohesive, better way to go through it, I think. Thank you. Okay. And like I said, there were things that were mentioned that we just hadn't seen it that way, and then it made sense, and so we could add that in. So all we're doing now is basically sending those changes back to Erie One, once we've done all the other sections, and then they'll kick it back for a second draft, so.
Thank you, thank you to everybody that did this work, because, phew, I, I just look at it and I'm like, I'm glad I'm not on that committee.
Yeah, and I didn't carry that draft in with me tonight, as you can see, because I'm sick of carrying it around, but no, it's okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm
My binding is fixed now, yes, thank you.
I did, I did notice that a lot of the, the rules were things that were in the contract. So it wasn't, so it, it didn't necessarily have to be in the policies because it related, it changes as the contract changes. Now, as a community member, since it's no longer in board policy, and I'm curious about what those changes are, where would I go to ask those questions? Because, because of all that stuff now belongs just in the contract, and not everybody necessarily has access to contracts.
It's, it's never been in the con- it's never been in a policy, so that's, that's not a change from where we currently are, so that's the other reason why we said there wasn't even a, uh, an opportunity to go into that because it's alwa- it's always been in the contract.
Okay.
Things like, um, and you'll know that, I mean, it was like evaluation of staff, like, that's in every bargaining
Right.
you know, unit contract, so it wasn't, didn't make sense. So those are most of the things, I think, if not all of the things that are in contracts have always been.
Okay.
And I'll also just state one more time, as I stated at the workshop, that all of the work that we're doing is strictly based on the fact that we're reviewing our manual with Erie One and has nothing to do with any other bargaining units or contracts whatsoever. So I'll just make that statement clear one more time, is the sole responsibility of that policy manual that we're going through, so. All right, with that, I have a motion to approve the first reading of Personnel Policies. Section six thousand, prior to sending to Erie One Bosse's for the next round of editing. Charlie Sombol, second, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven, nothing, excellent. All right, we'll move on to our school liaison reports. Our students and Joan and our presenters do such a good job of covering everything, there's almost nothing left. I don't have anything for any of my schools, but I'll make sure everyone, if there's something that wasn't covered tonight that you want to make sure your school has presented, if anybody has anything.
Everything's kind of a pause till after the holidays, so.
Yeah, it is a, kind of a interesting timing between the holidays, so, okay. Yep, you got something, yeah, go ahead.
DeWitt, um, so this is my first year with DeWitt, and they are over twenty-seven thousand in their account. But the really important part of that is less than twenty percent comes from the parents. It's all through their fundraising, it doesn't go after parents or grandparents or aunts and uncles. So very impressed by what they do, and that, that'd be a good model for some of the other schools to follow. Um, and then the last thing, Mrs. Balsammold didn't, uh, cover this, but on the Dance-A-Thon at Plank Road North, they raised fourteen thousand. If they exceeded five thousand, Craig will have to have his hair dyed, greeting old.
She did not cover that, so thank you very much for coming.
So Craig has had his hair dyed, he wouldn't give me the date because I wanted to pop in, but
I think I know someone or a few people in that building that might be able to get us that photo.
So, I, but, but I like how the principal is involved in that.
I know Plank South has done similar things like that too.
If you see Craig, let him know.
Oh, absolutely.
I went to the Willink PTSA and, and attended the Thomas, and a lot of the time was spent really on the Capital Project and becoming informed on it. Thank you to Brian for making that presentation to them. Um, that was the main focus, that and the budget, which is beyond my scope right now, the PTSA, I'll have to figure that out another day. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Legislative, I know Linda and I talked, you'll probably have more of an update down the road?
Yeah, so the Ledge meetings, um, Zoom meetings were Monday, but yesterday, um, there were two sessions. Many of the legislators didn't actually pay back their assistance, so it was a little, oh, sorry. It was a little bit frustrating because they're not able to answer the questions. But I will share with everybody the Monroe County School Board Association's position papers and the questions that were asked. Um, yeah, and, and I'll type up a report, it was, it, it, it was good to see the people that did show up, and there were so many people from Monroe County represented, so that, that's very encouraging. And the Ledge Breakfast will be in February, and we can put that on our calendar if we choose to go to that, so.
I probably won't be
I'm sure a lot of you won't, but, and there's also, um,
Stone it out there.
Albany. Yeah, but, no, I'll share some information when I get it all typed up.
Thank you.
When I got, so, yeah.
Do we have labor relations?
Last month was the electric buses, um, the good, the bad, and the ugly, um, that's a
Last month was the electric buses, um, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Um, that's a hot topic. We actually could have gone on a ride, but Dave and I chose not to go on a ride. We were okay with that. Um, but a lot of, a lot of it is, you know, the good is they're quiet, there's zero emissions. The bad is the grid cannot support them right now. Um, the concern that there's only one type of bus, it's a sixty-six passenger bus, so there's no small buses, there's no, um, wheelchair accessible buses. And, um, funding is a big issue. The companies that, um, produce these buses cannot possibly produce enough buses um, for the deadline of twenty-thir, twenty-thirty-five. So it's very concerning, a lot of questions about it, but I think it's something that we will talk about for many years to come.
I live in everything.
I'm sure.
Uh, information exchange, I don't know if there is any.
Yeah, so that was November ninth. Um, the presentation was provided by REN Regional Equity Network. And it was how BOEs can support their district's focus on DEI, a lot of it we are doing. Um, they define the equity process, everyone gets what they need for equal access to opportunities and to flourish in those opportunities. And the equity goal has been reached when we can no longer predict outcomes based on race, ability, SES, gender, sexual orientation. So I thought that that was really interesting because we don't usually talk about, how do you know when you've, you know, you're meeting that goal? So they recommend, um, seeking out professional learning on DEI for boards, webinars, books, conferences, which we have done. Um, develop and adopt a board policy on DEI, which we're working on. Making sure that district budget aligns with DEI work, which I think we've done, especially with our positions and our support there. Um, and ensuring that there's an administrator charged with this work, which is new this year and we, we've done. So that was, um, those are good things. Um, you know, they talked about curriculum and how it should focus on high-quality tier-one instruction in literacy-rich environments, that the quality of instruction really matters. So, a rich and guaranteed curriculum that is vertically and horizontally aligned, where students can see themselves and others in real ways. And then a cyclical curriculum, curriculum review process. So I don't know if that's something, that part, I don't know if that's something that we do today, but that, you know, that cyclical review of curriculum is kind of like what we do with the policy manuals, you know, as a, that's good. Um, and so the other thing they talked about was setting expectations for yourself as a board. Um, so, you know, developing a retreat schedule to engage in ongoing learning, um, which I know we've done some of that and it just preps the conversation for making sure that that's ongoing. Um, and providing explicit time for stakeholders or student groups to share their perspectives and work in a safe environment. So that's been a topic, you know, we've seen across communities, is what is a safe environment for people to come and share that information? As board meetings primarily have not been it. Um, so, you know, those sharing circles, I think, are really important and having the, the groups that we have engaged. And I think it's really important to get those student voices, you know, keeping those student voices involved so that we're hearing from their perspectives. You know, how is your experience in our district? Yeah, so I thought, um, there was a very good meeting, next one is January eleventh.
Awesome. We don't really have much of an executive update, do we?
No, it was just the position
Papers and, yeah.
That was it on that.
All right, moving on to standing district, I don't know if there's an audit?
Not till January.
Not till January, okay. Policy, I think I've spoken about that quite a bit, unless anyone else has anything they want to add? No?
Additional sections as we move forward and same process as what we just did for the personnel policies.
Yeah, I like that process. Um, budget advisory, we kind of talked about that, and strategic planning, I think our next meeting is next Thursday, right? Okay, I got that in mind. See? Um, I'm not sure if we have one or fire.
Um, one was just Candy Bar Bingo.
I was gonna say, we were talking about bingo.
Candy Bar Bingo at State Road Elementary School was Thursday, and it was incredible. We expected thirty-eight families to show up and over a hundred and fifteen people showed up. It was
Candy bars?
We had plenty of candy bar. I, the, I can't thank the student volunteers enough. I think they made the program worthwhile. Um, they were, they knocked it out of the park. They are now called the Bingo Crew and they will be traveling to other schools. So that's pretty, and, and it's awesome. And then the only other thing is, um, one is, can, Wednesday meeting is next Wednesday and they're continuing to offer naloxone training, um, which there's such a need right now for all of that, um, training. So, that's all I have for them.
All right, that's pretty good. Next up?
I was just gonna say, but I can't feel like that's been, you know, part of the theme that we've heard, is that events have been over-attended for what they were expecting. And it's because this year feels so good, as I sit here with a mask, but still alive and there. But, you know, it feels so good for kids to be back and pl, and seeing each other and participating in these activities. And so, it's been great to hear that there's been over attendance. How many kids showed up at the eighth grade semi-formal? They even had that in years. So it's so happy to hear. And I was happy to hear the nurse even reinforce that they see in schools that the kids are happy and happier than they've been in a long time.
Yeah, and the support that the staffing we've been able to provide them, how helpful that's been.
Exactly, especially since we just brought those posi, right, these positions just came in and it was really important to see, because people ask, where, what, why? What do they, and now you know. And if they say that, you know, to see healthcare workers going on field trips and to making sure that our kids are safe and taken care of, that's a huge relief.
That's pretty good. Next up is the consent agenda, which obviously we'll get, read, unless there's any questions about anything in there. We should be good, right? Motion to approve all consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent.
So moved.
So moved, Linda, second mic, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes seven, nothing.
I don't believe we have any speakers tonight, correct? So just a couple of last-minute announcements here. Obviously, we have the Capital Project vote next Tuesday, all day at Trader. I brought my handy-dandy flyer here, cause hopefully everyone got this over the weekend, right?
Point out front, there's a blue section in the middle.
Front, inside, yep.
Back blue and then the
And the back.
So the three blues.
Three blues, and the website is constantly being updated with frequently asked questions, so lots of information to be had out there. We hope to see a good turnout next Tuesday at Trader.
Um, Finality of the vote?
I plan on being there, yeah. At the
At Trader, yeah, nine o'clock, yeah.
It should be, yeah, it should be. That's right, that's what I'm hoping. Uh, January third, we have a workshop here on the second floor. Thought I wrote down the topic. I did, long-range financial planning. The tenth is our retreat, where we'll do our mid-year review. I believe Linda signed out our South of Vale. So hopefully everyone gets a chance to do that within the week. And then on the seventeenth is our next regular business meeting. Um, that one, we added food service too. Yeah.
December or January?
January.
I think that's pretty much it. If there's anything I'm forgetting?
No, we'll try to set up, um, a greenhouse visit before that meeting. I'll try to do that in the next week, so we can all go out and visit that.
All right, it's almost eight o'clock?
Yes.
I think we're good?
We are.
Hopefully everyone has a nice holiday season, right? I'll see most of you on Tuesday for the vote, but just in case, you know, those watching. All right, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Carol, so moved, second. Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes, yay. Have a good night, everyone.